He met the need of my heart. Shadows dispelling with joy, I am telling he made all the darkness depart. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. When at the cross the Savior made me whole. My sins were washed away and my night was turned to day. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. On the last. Now have a hope that will surely endure after the passing of time. I have a future in heaven for sure, there in those mansions sublime. And it's because of that wonderful day when at the cross I believed. Rich is eternal and blessing supernal from his precious hand I receive. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. When at the cross the Savior made me whole. My sins were washed away and my night was turned to day. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul.
Those high notes I have a hard time hitting. The low notes I have a hard time hitting. Any notes I have a hard time hitting, alright? Hey, we're glad you're here tonight. Father, thank you for loving us. Thank you for all you have done for us. Father, I pray that we have spent time asking you to do work within our individual lives. And if we yield to the Spirit of God, then we also know that that will affect our ministry here. So Father, I pray that you'd be honored and glorified tonight. May you be lifted up, may all folks be drawn to you. And we'll give you the glory for it's in your name we ask it. Amen.
As you see, take your songbooks to song 145. Song 145, getting ready today, moving out tomorrow. Wouldn't that be something with the Lord came? Um, maybe during the preaching, who knows? You're gonna hear a trumpet and we're gonna go hallelujah. Not that the preaching's over, but we're gonna continue the service up in heaven. Wouldn't that be wonderful? Song 145 on the first verse, I wanna move from this world of fear. Ready? I wanna move from this world of fear. Kind of getting tired of living here. I wanna go home where the winds of sorrow never blow. Far from the shadow of the tomb, far from the sadness and the gloom. I wanna go home when death demands my tattered soul. Getting ready today, moving out tomorrow. Gonna say goodbye to earthly sorrow. I'm looking for a mansion fair. I see the light, I'm almost there. I wanna go home when life is through. Moving up to heaven where dreams come true. I kind of get thrilled thinking about the glory we will share. I'll see my loved ones who are gone. I'll see my Jesus on his throne. I'll never return to this old life when I get there. Getting ready today, moving out tomorrow. Gonna say goodbye to earthly sorrow. I'm looking for a mansion fair. I see the light, I'm almost there. Amen. Great singing. Just a reminder, some of the announcements we had from this morning. A lot similar, uh, but those of you that may have been serving in the junior churches, this is for you. Don't forget this Friday is our youth night for our special meetings encouraging. I've sent text messages out to other youth groups inviting them to come and waiting to receive word. Sent the link to them, parents of our teenagers. If you could, just for planning purposes, you guys are planning to be here Friday, planning to bring your teenagers, maybe even bringing some neighbors or family members that are teenagers as well. We need to plan accordingly. Don't just show up. We want to make sure there's plenty of food for all of them. And so if you need that link, we'll get it to you. Just go, let us know how many you're planning on bringing that night so we can plan accordingly. That'll be a huge, huge help to us. Not this Wednesday, the next Wednesday is the start of King's Kids. And those of you that came to our workers meeting last Wednesday, I gave you a workers list. Well, I had to update it. And so there's a new workers list in your box. And so if you signed up to be a King's Kids worker, check your box, make sure you have it. And so you know what your job is gonna be on the 17th and be in prayer for the start of the new year for King's Kids. Also our couples Bible study. Don't forget that we have the teen babysitting available. And all proceeds from the teen babysitting goes towards their, uh, bill, uh, for Harvest Fest. And parents of teenagers, the early bird registration due date is next Sunday. And so if you want to just pay $20 instead of 25, make sure that you're signed up and registered by next Sunday. Otherwise it's $25 a person with it. And, uh, speaking of couples, a preacher will talk more about the couples Bible study. He'll also talk more about the couples, uh, retreat. But I have something, I must say, is it okay if the youth pastor gets carnal a little bit here? Well, too bad. Alright, so here's. Every year we go to Shipshewana. I love it, okay? I grew up in the city. I hate cities. They're just busy. They're crazy. I prefer a small town that's Shipshewana. My favorite thing aside from the preaching at the couples retreat are the omelets at the Blue Gate Inn. Cause you go, you give them what you want and you can watch them make it. It's freshly made and it's a big omelet. It's delicious. We sent out a survey, what would you like us to do? What, what's gonna, the part of the survey was what's gonna make you want to come to the couples retreat? The overwhelming majority said, let's go somewhere different. Which means Pastor Chris had to give up his omelet. So more people would sign up. And I gotta tell you, I don't see a lot of names on that list. And if I'm giving up my omelet, you better put your name on there and you better be there. Because I am sacrificing a great bunch for you. Alright.
That's what I like, a sacrificial heart. And that just makes me feel so much better. I reminded you of, uh, the special meetings at Loomis Park. And, uh, again, the Tharp brothers are gonna be there. We have them coming, I think it's next year and they've always been a blessing. But, uh, Amanda sent out an email about Darren having going to the hospital with heart issues. Now I text Darren and said, hey, I'm praying for you. What's going on? And he said, thanks. That's it. I have no idea. So you guys know anything more about what's going on? You know what's going on?
They checked him and he's fine.
Okay, alright. Well, I don't know if he's completely fine, but maybe his heart is good anyway, okay? But we're thankful for that, right? But keep that in mind, and that's gonna be at Loomis Park. And, uh, uh, the Tharps have always been a blessing. And so I'm looking forward to that, alright? Again, want to remind you that the offering in its entirety tonight unless otherwise designated. And the rest this week is gonna go to the Hightowers, uh, for the ministry here. So keep that in mind if you will. Again, a lot of things in the bulletin, take note of them and make yourself, uh, available to those that apply to you. And, uh, again, pray for many of our folks. Many of our folks are really struggling physically. And not just pray for them, but give them a call and see if there's something that you can do to be an encouragement and a help to them, right? Lord Jesus, it's good to be in your house. Always good to be in your house. It's wonderful to be with your people. It's fantastic to hear the word of God come forth with power and authority. And Lord, I would ask that we have spent time preparing our hearts. This is not just something we do because we're supposed to. It's something we do because I want us to get closer to you. I want the Spirit of God to have freedom to work within our hearts and lives and to change us, to motivate us. So Father, I pray that that would be accomplished tonight. Again, Father, we thank you for your many blessings and we'll give you the glory for it's in your name we ask it. Amen.
Wiggle worms, you guys are dismissed. You get the McVickers tonight. Thankful for that. It's always an exciting time. All our teachers are exciting. And so, parents, remember to pick up your children at the conclusion of the service. Chad would greatly appreciate that. Or you might, he might throw them at you. I have no idea, alright? Just kidding, he won't throw them. Hard. Okay. I can stop stalling. They're all out of here now. So let's all stand together, take some time to fellowship, shake hands, greet one another while the piano plays. As you find your places, stand with me. Take your songbooks to song number 47. Song 47, it's Jesus and Me. What a friend we have in Him. Aren't you glad He's the one walking you through? Always there, never leaving, never forsaking. Song number 47 and we'll sing on the first. Ready? I traveled alone up on this lonesome way. My burdens were heavy and dark was my day. I looked for a friend, not knowing that he had all of the time been looking for me. Now it is Jesus and me for each tomorrow. For every heartache and every sorrow. I know that I can depend upon my newfound friend. And so till the end, it's Jesus and me. On the last, forever I'll sing of His great love to me. Forever I'll tell it on land and on sea. I'll stay by His side, contented I'll be. For all of my life, it's Jesus and me. Now it is Jesus and me for each tomorrow. For every heartache and every sorrow. I know that I can depend upon my newfound friend. And so to the end, it's Jesus and me.
Father, we ask that you'd meet with us tonight. We ask that we would have tender hearts. Father, I'd ask that you would use Brother Hightower in a mighty way and it would change us for all eternity. And we'll give you the glory for it's in your name we ask it. Amen.
My heart can sing when I pause to remember. A heartache here is but a stepping stone. Along a trail that's winding always upward. This troubled world is not my final home. But until then, my heart will go on singing. Until then, with joy I'll carry on. Until the day my eyes behold the city. Until the day God calls me home. The things of earth will dim and lose their value. If we recall, they're borrowed for a while. And things of earth that cause the heart to tremble. Remembered there will only bring a smile. But until then, my heart will go on singing. Until then, with joy I'll carry on. Until the day my eyes behold the city. Until the day God calls me home. This weary world with all its toil and struggle. May take its toll of misery and strife. The soul of man is like a waiting falcon. When it's released, it's destined for the skies. But until then, my heart will go on singing. Until then, with joy I'll carry on. Until the day my eyes behold the city. Until the day God calls me home. But until then, my heart will go on singing. Until then, with joy I'll carry on. Until the day my eyes behold that city.
Man, thank you for that, brother. Open your Bibles with me tonight to the book of 2 Corinthians. 2 Corinthians, chapter number five. I didn't have the opportunity, I guess it wasn't really an opportunity. Uh, but growing up, I didn't go to kindergarten. It wasn't required and my dad said I already knew how to play. So I, I didn't, I didn't go to kindergarten. But I remember when I was getting ready for first grade, I just, I wasn't really excited. I was, I was the kind of kid that liked to play all the time. And I had heard stories about school, like they make you sit. And they make you be quiet. And you might even learn some things. And so, uh, my mom convinced me to just give it a try. So I went to school the first day and it was kind of traumatic. But when I got home, I said, it was okay, but I'm not going again. She said, you have to go. But I said, Mom, I don't like it for all the reasons I told you. And I said, also, it's a waste of time. She said, it is not a waste, it's time well spent. Well, I still have mixed emotions about it, but I think it's a bad thing to waste time. Growing up, we, uh, always had our evening meal together as a family. I have two younger brothers. And the rule at our house is whatever you put on your plate, you eat. Now every now and then, Mom would try a new recipe. I'm not a fan of new recipes. I, I like what I like. I, I, I don't need new stuff to figure out. But anyway, uh, she would say, you need to take some of that. And so of course you'd take a tiny amount and she'd say, more. And sometimes what she made was pretty good, I guess. Um, she's a good cook. But sometimes it was horrible. And I would eat everything else except that glop. And she'd say, you're gonna clean your plate. Mom, I, I, I didn't take it. You made me take it. And she'd say, we are not wasting food. Well, I disagreed with her about wasting time. And I disagreed about wasting food. I thought it would be a waste to eat that stuff. We don't want to waste money. We don't want to waste opportunities. But tonight I want to preach to you about a much greater waste than that. According to the Bible, it's possible for you and me to waste grace. God's grace is a wonderful gift. If it wasn't for the grace of God, we wouldn't know the Lord. If it wasn't for the grace of God, we wouldn't have, uh, multiple blessings every day. If it wasn't for the grace of God, we wouldn't have any hope of future glory and bliss. But the Bible says that it's possible to waste His grace. 2 Corinthians, chapter five, I want to begin reading in verse 17. This is a familiar portion of scripture. It says, therefore, if any man be in Christ, he's a new creature. Old things are passed away, behold, all things are become new. And all things are of God, who hath reconciled us to Himself by Jesus Christ, and hath given to us the ministry of reconciliation. To wit that God was in Christ reconciling the world unto Himself, not imputing their trespasses unto them, and hath committed unto us the word of reconciliation. Now then we're ambassadors for Christ, as though God did beseech you by us. We pray you, in Christ's stead, be reconciled to God. For we have made Him to be sin for us, who knew no sin, that we might be made the righteousness of God in Him. We then, as workers together with Him, beseech you also that you receive not the grace of God in vain. For He saith, I have heard thee in a time accepted, and in the day of salvation I have succored thee. Behold, now is the accepted time. Behold, now is the day of salvation. Verse number one tells us that because of all God has done for us, we need to be careful not to receive His grace in vain. The idea is, don't waste the grace that God has given to us. Father, I ask your blessing on the message. I pray it'd be a reminder to all of us about the wonder of your grace and the responsibility we have to use that grace for your glory. In Jesus' name, amen. Obviously, we know that we're saved by grace through faith. Ephesians 2:8 and 9. For by grace are you saved, through faith, not of yourselves. It's the gift of God, not of works, lest any man should boast. And so there is a grace for salvation. We read about that grace in verse 17, that because of that, if any man's in Christ, he's a new creature. Old things are passed away, behold, all things are become new. Aren't you glad when you got saved, your sins were washed away? Aren't you glad when you got saved? And I realize it's not always instantaneous. Sometimes it's a growth process. But, but when you got saved, things became different. The, the old words, you replaced them with new words, hopefully. I understand, right away, if you stumped your toe or hit your thumb with a hammer, hallelujah didn't immediately come to your mind. But you began to know the words I used to say, can't say them anymore. The things I used to do, can't do them anymore. And a change took place, not because of our abilities, but because of the grace of God that brings salvation. And so we're thankful for that grace that was bestowed upon us. Made it possible for us to trust Christ as our Savior. Made it possible for our sins to be forgiven. But what a waste it would be to know of the grace of God, to have your heart touched by the grace of God and not get saved. What a waste to refuse to get saved. To refuse that love of God, to refuse the gift of God, which is eternal life. We all would agree, that's a horrible thing. But listen, how awful is it to be saved but to refuse to become a new creature? We're wasting that grace. How awful to have all the blessings and all the benefits of salvation and yet choose to live like the old person. To live the, the old person in our words, in our works, in our thoughts. in our thoughts, in our actions, and in our reactions. What a waste! And so, I want to encourage you tonight. God did a great work of salvation in saving us. Let's not waste that grace. But you know, grace extends beyond salvation. There's more to the grace of God than the grace that was required to save us. There's also grace for sanctification. Talked about that this morning. It just means separating from sin. It means holiness. Titus 2, verse 11 and 12 says, "For the grace of God, the bring of salvation, has appeared to all men, teaching us the denying ungodliness and worldly lusts; we should live soberly, and righteously, and godly in this present world." And so, after we're saved, there's the wonder of the saving grace, but there's also the wonder of sanctifying grace. By that, I mean, we learn to do what's right. We learn. Sometimes, we're taught by others whose instruction is a help to us. Sometimes, we're taught by the Holy Spirit. Because the Bible teaches, when you got saved, when I got saved, God, the Holy Spirit, came to live inside of us. Our body is the temple of the Holy Ghost. And now, if I start to do something wrong, He says, "Whoa!" If there's something I ought to do, I get a little push, I get a little nudge. And so, He teaches us, it's the grace of God that allows us to grow as Christians. Remember what the Scripture says? That we should grow in grace and in the knowledge of the Lord Jesus Christ? And so, the, the grace teaches us to say, "No, there's sin." It's that grace that allows us to do what's right. God has given us grace to get saved, but He's also given us grace to live for Him and to love Him and to serve Him and to do what's right, which includes separating from sin. God's given us the tools to do right. But what if that grace, which is available to us to help us to grow, was neglected or rejected? What a waste that would be! A waste to come to church, hear the Bible taught, and the Bible preached. And God might even deal with your heart about decisions you need to make. But stubbornly, we say, "No!" Rejecting what God would have us to do. Too concerned about what others might think, or how this might affect my life. Years ago, we took our teenagers to a youth conference, and the preaching was just marvelous, point on. But at one invitation, all of our kids came forward to the altar. He had preached on just living for God and doing right. Every single one of our kids came to the altar to pray and to make a decision, wanting to live for God, except one boy. His name was John. And I looked around to see if any of our kids needed help while they were at the altar, and I see John standing back there like this. Just, just a defiant look on his face. And so, later, I didn't point him out right then. I didn't want to make him feel uncomfortable. But I said, "You know, John, I noticed at invitation, the Lord spoke to everybody, but evidently not to you. Did the Lord not deal with you during that message?" And he said, "I know exactly what I should do. I know what God wants me to do, but I don't want to do it." He said, "I'm not ready yet. If I got right with God, like you're talking about, I'd have to give up all my friends, and I'd have to give up my habits. And just to be completely honest, I don't want to do it." Well, you can imagine, with an attitude like that, it wasn't long till John was out of church, running with the wrong crowd, got involved in drugs. And in fact, before he graduated high school, he was arrested for selling drugs. And after that, several other drug convictions, he ended up in prison. I had completely lost touch with John. We were in evangelism, and I had taught Sunday School one morning. And right after the service, here comes this young man down the aisle. And I'm looking, I said, "John?" And he comes up, and he throws his arms around me. That always makes me a little nervous. But, but he throws his arms around me, and he said, "Preacher, I just want you to know, I got right with God." I said, "Well, praise the Lord." He says, "I have been in prison," I, I don't know if it was the last six or seven years. He said, "I've been in prison the last six or seven years, and the last year, just, just recently, I got my heart right with God." I said, "John, that is a blessing. I'm glad to see you. I'm glad to hear that." And he said, "Do you remember when we went to that youth conference?" I said, "Yeah." He said, "Do you remember the conversation that we had?" I said, "The one where you told me you knew what God wanted you to do, but you weren't willing to do it?" He said, "Yeah." He said, "Every day that I was in prison, I thought of that conversation. Every single day, those words haunted me," he said. And then he broke down crying, and he said, "I just wonder, what would have happened to my life if I would have got right with God back then?" I, I encouraged him, and I told him, "God's not done with you. You still can live for the Lord." But all those years, you know what John did? He wasted the grace of God. It was available. God wanted him to do right. He had opportunity. He had people who loved him and prayed for him. But because of his own selfishness, John chose to do wrong. He wasted that grace. There's grace for salvation. There's grace for sanctification. There's grace for serving the Lord. Ephesians 3, verse 7. Paul says, "Wherefore, I was made a minister, according to the gift of the grace of God, given unto me by the effectual working of His power." There's the, the, the wonderfulness of being able to serve the Lord. In fact, back in chapter six, he talks about being a laborer with the Lord and a laborer one with another. We get to serve God. What a blessing that is! What a joy! By the way, I, I went a little long this morning because the amens died out toward the end. I'm just, I'm just warning you tonight, the more amens, the... Whatever, whatever you like. But, but, aren't you glad we get to serve God? We had a new Christian in our church. He's faithful, loved the Lord, but he'd never been exposed to Christianity much. And he came to me after a service, he goes, "Man, I love being in church on, on Sunday and Wednesday, but I'm curious, what do you do the rest of the week?" I said, "What do you mean?" And he goes, "Well, I've been thinking, maybe I'd like to be a preacher." "What do you, what do you do the rest of the week?" I said, "Nothing." You know, serving God isn't just what the pastor does on Sunday morning or Sunday night or Wednesday night. Serving God is something we get to do every day. If, if God has placed you in ministry where you actually get paid for serving the Lord, what a blessing that is! But if God's placed you in a factory, or in, at a farm, or if God's given you some occupation where you can live for Him and serve Him and be a blessing, what a wonderful thing that is! The influence that you can have is just as vital and just as important as the influence I can have. I mean, we, we all have heard of D.L. Moody. You know how D.L. Moody got saved? He was a, a young man, needed a job, so he went to work at a shoe store. And a guy in the shoe store, who, who owned the shoe store, his name was Edward Kimball. Mr. Kimball was a devout servant of the Lord, and he, he talked with Dwight about Jesus. And eventually Dwight Moody got saved. And he invited him to church, and Mr. Moody began to grow, and God began to work on his heart. And then the Lord used him as one of the great evangelists in American history. But what would have happened if it wasn't for that faithful man at the shoe store? Billy Sunday, one of the amazing evangelists, was a professional baseball player, played for the Chicago White Sox. And in those days, they didn't have lights on the field, so all their games were afternoon games. Their nights were free. And one night, Billy Sunday and some of his teammates are walking down the streets of Chicago, and they pass by the Pacific Garden Rescue Mission. And they, inside, the, the folks in the rescue mission were singing. And Billy stopped. And they said, "Come on, Bill, let's go." And he goes, "Hang on, I..." He goes, "I love gospel music. I just, I just want to hear it." And the fellow at the door said, "Well, well, come on in. There's gonna be singing for a while, and then there's gonna be a message." And all of his friends are saying, "Come on, Bill, let's go. You, you can do this religion later." He goes, "I want to go in, hear the rest of the singing." Went in, heard the singing, then he heard the sermon, and he got saved. How would you like to be the guy that invited Billy Sunday to come on in, listen to the service? My point is, you, you don't have to be a bright and shining star in the constellation of God. You just have to be a faithful person. God's given us the grace to do those things. But what if we waste that grace? What if Mr. Kimball said, "You know, I don't want to make these guys feeling uncomfortable, preaching to them, talking about religion. I'll just keep it to myself and talk religion at church." D.L. Moody would have not, never gotten saved. Or the fellow working the door at the rescue mission. I'm sure he would have rather been home, but he's serving God. Thank the Lord. You know, I don't think we know or even are gonna begin to understand the influence and the effect that we have had until we get to heaven. I also don't think we're gonna understand the influence we could have had, but neglected. But had a reason, had, had some other thing going on, and that grace that was available to us, we wasted that grace. There's grace for soul winning. 1 Peter 4, verse 10. "As every man hath received the gift, even so minister the same one to another, as good stewards of the manifold grace of God." It's a wonderful thing to tell other people about Jesus. It's a wonderful thing to invest in eternity. I'm, I'm gonna say that again, because that's a great spot for an amen. You know, some things, some things just kind of elicit amens. It's a wonderful thing to invest in eternity! Yeah. Let me, let me tell you about a, a guy named Bob Schreckenberg. Bob Schreckenberg got saved in his late twenties, early thirties. He was married, had, had a daughter, and God called him to preach. And he talked to his pastor, and his pastor said, "Well, you ought to get some training." And so, he quit his job, had a good job, and, and went to Bible college. Graduated college, began to serve in North Carolina, but he had heard about how out in the West, there were hundreds and hundreds of miles with no Bible preaching church. And so, he prayed about it, and God laid on his heart he should go out west, find a town that didn't have a Bible preaching church, and start a church. So, he went out west, family, made a down payment on a small house, and they began church with just a couple of people in their house. And the church never grew to more than 30 or 40 people, but they were able to eventually get a piece of property and build a church building. And he, for decades, tried to reach that community, strong Mormon influence. But he heard about a little town just over the Idaho border into Nevada that had no kind of witness at all. And so, he thought about, "Maybe I'll go there and have Bible school on Saturday. Maybe I can reach some people through that." And so, every Saturday, he and his wife and one or two folks from the church would drive 50 miles to that little town and have Bible school. I lived there at the time, and my brothers and I would go because they always had refreshments, usually chocolate chip cookies. Who's gonna turn down chocolate chip cookies? And I, I learned the Bible stories, you know, Daniel in the lion's den, and David and Goliath. And I'm sure I must have heard the gospel, but it never, never registered, never affected me. But when I was 13, Brother Schreckenberg said, "The teenagers from our church are going to camp. We'd like for you to go." And I thought, you know, I'm kind of bored, nothing going on. And so, I agreed to go to camp. And at camp, I heard the gospel, and, and I got saved! I'm gonna try that again, because I'm, I'm a little disappointed. That's a big deal. A lot of times, Christians get excited about other people getting saved. Let me try that again. I got saved! Yeah, I got saved! God called me to preach, and now for 46 years, I've been serving God in the ministry. You know, Brother Schreckenberg never pastored a church of more than 50 people. As far as I know, I'm the only one under his ministry that, that went on to, to serve the Lord in full-time service. But I'm very, very thankful that he used what he had. We were preaching a revival about, oh, I don't know, two and a half, three hours from where Brother Schreckenberg lived. And one Sunday service... Well, I, I should go back a little bit. I was pastoring in Missouri before we went into evangelism. And one Sunday morning, here comes Brother Schreckenberg down the aisle. He lived in Idaho. This is Lebanon, Missouri. And he comes down the aisle, and I, I didn't expect him. I said, "Brother Schreckenberg, what are you doing here?" He said, "I just want to hear you preach before I die." I, I cried like a little baby the whole service, trying to preach. Probably seven, eight years later, we were preaching three hours from his house. He's, he's near 90 years old now. Walked in on Sunday night for the meeting, and there's Brother Schreckenberg. I said, "What are you doing here?" He said, "I just want to see if you got any better." You know, for the last 40 years of his life, every month, I would write him a letter and thank him for telling me about Jesus. I just, just, just to know, I want to thank you for caring enough to share the gospel with me. My point is, you don't have to be a world-famous soul winner. You just have to use the grace that God has given you. You just have to use the grace that God has given you. I learned a long time ago, not everybody I witnessed to is going to get saved. In fact, most people I try to talk to about the Lord don't want to hear it. But the Bible tells us that, "If we will witness, he that goeth forth and weepeth, bearing precious seed, shall doubtless come again with rejoicing, bringing his sheaves with him." God says, "If we will witness, we will see people get saved." Don't waste the grace God has given you to reach others. Well, I'm not sure I know how. You have your testimony. Tell others how you got saved. If it's something that you feel like you need to know more about, it's pretty easy to learn how to lead somebody to Christ. It's not like learning a foreign language. It's not like learning algebra. How many of y'all ever took algebra? Telling you, for me, what a waste! To this day, I could care less about what x is. 9, 112, square root of 7, I don't care. I have no idea what it has to do with my sermon. Yes, ma'am. That was probably the waste of an illustrator. But God has given us grace. And Paul said, "We want to be certain that the grace God's given to us is not in vain." I quoted this verse earlier, but 2 Peter 3:18 says, "Grow in grace and in the knowledge of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ." Wonderful thing to be able to grow. It's a wonderful thing to have a relationship with the Lord. It's a wonderful thing to know Him and to know about Him and to do His will and to just allow God to use our life. And then, we see it influence others, our family, our friends. If you have an opportunity in church, in your class, or with the little ones, or wherever, it's a joy to be able to grow to the place where we can teach and help others, or we can ignore and reject that grace. We don't need our Bible to grow if we want to just waste our grace. We don't need to pray if we want to just waste the grace. Don't need to be faithful to church. Don't need to teach others, don't need to reach others. But what a waste! Let me read you this verse one more time, and then we're finished. Chapter 6, verse 1, "We then, as workers together with Him, beseech you also, that you receive not the grace of God in vain." God has abundantly blessed all of us with grace. Let's not waste it. Let's not waste it. Father, I thank you tonight for the word of God. I thank you for the privilege to serve you. Lord, I thank you for the marvelous consideration of the grace of God. Lord, help us to use it, help us to cherish it. Lord, protect us from wasting it. I pray to your Lord that tonight, you would challenge every single heart of every hearer. Help us to be doers and not hearers only. Your eyes are closed. Let me ask you a question. How many of you tonight? I'm not going to ask you if you feel like you've been guilty of wasting grace, but how many tonight would say, "Pray for me. I know that God has given me grace. I know that God has blessed me with His grace, and I don't want to waste it." In matters of sanctification, or service, or soul winning, I don't want to waste the grace of God. I want to grow in grace. Pray for me. If God spoke into your heart, and you let me pray for you, would you raise your hand? Hold it up high. That's my desire tonight. God bless you. Put your hands down. You know, if we can follow through with that, if we can carry that thought, and that burden, and that request, it'll make a difference in our lives. It'll make a difference in our families. Make a difference in your church. Let's stand together. I'm going to pray for you. And then, I'm going to ask every one of you that raised your hand to make your way to the altar. And just pray that prayer of commitment to the Lord. Thank Him for His grace, and ask Him to help you to not waste it. Father, I thank you tonight for so many who've responded. I pray that this message would find lodging place in our hearts, not just for this sermon, but make a difference, change our lives. I pray for each one whose hand was raised, or help them to do what they need to do. In Jesus' name, amen. Come quickly, don't wait, just come. If you raised your hand, come on.
Amen. What time tomorrow night? 7 o'clock, all right? Trust you'll be here. Bring somebody with you, all right? Start praying about it, and bring somebody with you. And let's see what God can do, a great thing this week, all right? Father, thank you for today. Thank you for decisions that were made. And again, Father, I think of those that are really struggling physically, Father, that you'd meet their needs. Help us to be sensitive to whatever the Holy Spirit lays on our heart to do to glorify you. And well, thank you for what's accomplished, in Jesus' name, amen. God bless you, you are dismissed.